Okay, guys, we don't need to play. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. This is our December 12th, 2022 meeting. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the commission that are here this evening. To my far right is Commission Member Jeff Kohan. Next to Jeff is also Commission Member James Fitzsimmons. To my immediate left is JP Vanoyt, who is the Vice Chairperson of the Commission. And to JP's left is Steve Allison, who is the Secretary. And next to Steve is David Parent, who is an alternate on the Commission. At the lower table is Cheryl Ann Tubby, who's our Recording Secretary. And next to Cheryl Ann is Kevin Pajini, who is our Town Planner. I'm Jim Seikther, the Chairperson of this Commission. Our first order of business would be to approve first the minutes of our October 12th, 2022 meeting. Any Commission Members with any comments, adjustments, corrections, additions to the minutes? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 12th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of October 12th, 2022.
Have a second for that, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstentions?
Abstention.
And Mr. Vanoyt abstains. And next one would be the looking for approval of the minutes of our November 14th, 2022. Same thing, any Commission Members with any corrections, additions, comments? If none, again, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the November 14th, 2022 Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Good. Moving on, before I get to our next order of business, number one, which is a public hearing, a special permit, new administrative building for Choate Rosemary Hall at 59 North Elm Street. The applicant has requested no action on that application, so obviously that's not going to be heard this evening. And it brings us to next order of business. Number two on our agenda, it's Old Business Site Plan Warehouse, 5 Research Parkway, Wallingford LLC, 5 Research Parkway. If the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for their presentation. And Mr. Allison, if you would please note all additional correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have correspondence from the Town of Wallingford Fire Chief dated November 17th, 2022. We have correspondence from Lizette Stone to Jeffrey Dewey dated November 21st, 2022. We have a memorandum from our Department of Engineering dated November 29th, 2022. Email correspondence to Kevin Pajini dated December 5th, 2022. Correspondence from our Chief of Police to Kevin Pajini, Town Planner, dated November 6th, 2022. Email correspondence from Allison Kapachinsky, Town Engineer, to Kevin Pajini, Town Planner, dated November 7th, 2022. Memorandum from Janice Small, Corporation Counsel, to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated December 7th, 2022. Email correspondence from Joan Munger to Kevin Pajini dated December 12th, 2022. And document submitted November 14th, 2022 by Adelaide Kopfer. And I believe that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. And if the applicant, please introduce themselves and continue with the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, James Perito. I'm an attorney with Hunter and Sage from New Haven office. With me is Chris Gagnon from BL, who is our project engineer on this. If you recall, last month, we made our presentation, and my notes indicated that there was a few questions and requests from members of the Commission. I believe they were as follows. I'll just sort of review those. There was a request that the police chief, as the principal traffic safety officer, should be contacted, and his opinion on the application should be obtained. There was a question, was the determination of the threshold question of 100 vehicles made correctly using the appropriate manual to make sure the application is properly being reviewed as a site plan? There was a question regarding how, where would the front of the building be in relation to the thoroughfare, which is Research Drive? And does the town's fire department have the capacity for the type of proposed building from a traffic safety standpoint? I believe that it was read into the record, the number of the documents that you received. I was going to just review some of those, because I think they answer all the questions and the issues that were raised by the members at the last meeting.
Excuse me, just before you do that, would you please turn that off until you're ready to, I guess, talk with your... Just pull the plug.
There you go. It's off. So I'd like to, I think, first start, probably the most direct one was the letter from the Fire Chief, which essentially was to my client, Mr. Chekaway. And he states, based on our previous comments on your site planification from the Fire Department and the Fire Prevention Division, the Wallingford Fire Department has the resources and capabilities to address emergency incidences at this proposed facility located at 5 Research Parkway. We also, as you know, at such time that an actual building is designed for the site, all those building plans are submitted to the Building Department, they're reviewed by the Building Department officials, they're reviewed by the Fire Department as well, to make sure that whatever is proposed to be stored inside the building and the design of the building has the correct design and equipment to meet all the building code and fire code requirements. So whatever's required at that point, when the building is physically designed, will be implemented to the Fire Marshal's satisfaction and the Building Department's satisfaction. The next letter was a memo from the Town Engineer. I think it's a very straightforward memo. I think it's very helpful for the Commission. Essentially, what the Town Engineer says is that the most applicable standard to be used is the trip generation ITE, which is what your regulations state should be used unless there's a more applicable standard. There's a very good discussion in her memo about how, you know, this manual is based on sort of amalgam of data that's collected from all different types of uses, and that you plug in the most appropriate use, in this case, the warehouse use, and not a specialized warehouse use, like a, you know, a high intensity or a drop-off or a freight yard, all of which are not permitted under your current regulations for this type of zone. So she correctly points out, you plug in the warehouse use, the size of the building, in this case, the 450,000 square feet of the warehouse area, and it gives you the calculation for the trips pursuant to the manual. She goes into detail about how she'd use the most recent manual, which in this case was the 11th edition, which was released in September of 2021. That's exactly what we used. And she had opined previously that our calculations, that the count was well under the 100, was correct in this instance. She also, you know, indicated in here that you've seen a previous situation in 1117 North Oak Road, where you also had a situation where there's not a specific tenant in mind, and so you're looking at the kind of use. We understand, as I believe, you know, your regulations set forth, that when you're applying for a specific kind of use, a warehouse use, if a particular tenant does not fit that use, then that's not a use that's going to be permitted here on this site. She also, I believe she also talked about, which was another question, I'll raise it in the context of her memo, there's a public comment question regarding the study of the stormwater analysis located at a point which the site represents no more than 10% of the total watershed. And she pointed out that the project site itself is approximately 45 acres, of which 7.6% is the total analysis area. Therefore, the stormwater analysis complies with 412H2. So I think she clarified that point, which was, I think, a point raised by the public, not necessarily this commission. So I think the other area she talked about was the review by the State Traffic Administration, OSTA, and they determined as a matter of, by definition, that a major traffic generator is always something categorized as a use that has over 100,000 square feet and/or 200 parking spaces, which clearly this proposal has. The OSTA will determine if the development is reviewed as an administrative decision or a certificate, and she opines that in all likelihood it'll be as a certificate, which is a more detailed review, because at a minimum, there's probably changes to the striping on Route 63. So that's, you know, that's the agency, the state agency, that looks to the detail of any off-site improvements that would have to be made to comply with the state regulations in terms of traffic. That would be through their analysis. So she also notes in her memo that both she and the Town Engineer, the traffic authority, the police chief, had spoken about this. He concurred with her findings, and that she put a lot of time into the analysis of this because this is the new district that you've created, and she wanted to make sure that this type of application was in compliance with your regulations. There should be, I think there was a reference to an email or a letter from the police chief that is also in there that concurred with her analysis in terms of the traffic safety analysis and accounts that she did there. The next memo, which I wanted to point out, was the one from Corporation Counsel, Janice Small. And again, it sort of reiterates something that she said in a prior memo to you, I think, that we talked about at the last meeting, that pursuant to 410B4 warehousing is a permitted use subject to site plan approval, and that the trip generation ITE and the general provisions in there are the applicable provisions as the Town Engineer has pointed out. And that since the engineer has confirmed with our engineer's calculation, since we are under the 100 peak hour vehicle trips, then this is a site plan review. And she gave you the standard for that review, citing many of the same cases that I had pointed out in my memo, and also talked about how in a site plan review, the off-site traffic issues are not within the site plan review, that that would be held under the state purview. So I think her conclusion is correct. The review of site plan for permitted as of right use is limited to determination as to whether the plan meets the specific regulations applicable to the site plan. I think, and I think we do in that instance. The other thing I think we wanted to show, if you want to put the machine back on in a minute, was the question about the frontage, so we have a sort of a mock-up of an elevation. I mean, this isn't the actual building, but this would be a good representation illustrating that the building faces Research. Chris, you could pop that up. So that's the corner of the building to the right-hand side. That's pointing, if I'm correct, in my direction, that would be, right, looking at that corner. So down that long driveway would bring you ultimately to the building, and that's the front of it. That would be the front door essentially for the tenant. It may be also helpful if you want to pull up some of the photos that we took that show the current winter view from Research. There you go. So that's the main driveway, and that's not winter, that's before the fall. There's the winter. So if you look, you can see way off in the distance, the upper ridge, you see the power lines way back in there. But there's a fair amount from the road, even in the winter view, there's a fair amount of carnivorous growth, a fair amount of wood, period, just, you know, even in the wintertime, that provides a good screen. Most of that is, you know, in the wetland area. So even from this standpoint, I know your regulations want us to face Research, which we do, you really don't see the face of it, but it complies with the regulations. And you have, as I said, good cover between the roadway and there. And with the wetlands, it's not covered, that, you know, gets eliminated because it's a sort of protected area. So in sum, we believe that the memos from the staff, your Corporations Counsel, and the information provided make it very clear that the property viewed as a site, is viewed as a site plan application. Our application is noted by the Town Planner, meets the requirements. And we understand that, you know, there is some concern about not having a specific tenant, but like many of the site plans that come in front of you, whether it's retail, office, other commercial industrial, we should be treated like everyone else. The, you know, the type of use that we're proposing is permitted, and when a tenant comes in, they'll have to comply with those uses and have to comply with your regulations as it's designed. So we're happy to answer any other questions. We have our folks here to answer both landscaping and the traffic onsite if you'd like. Any other questions?
Thank you. Commission Members with questions, comments for the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Through you, I'd like to ask some questions of the team, of the project team.
Sure.
Mr. Perito, the last time we had a little discussion about what the target was. I said, I was saying I was having difficulty vote, if I were able to vote, voting for a project when I really don't know what it is. Now, Ms. Kapachinsky put a lot of things in very much focus because, and she said, warehousing only includes drop yards, trucking terminals, parcel sorting, and retail distribution. Sounds fine. What is it, your understanding or your belief that it does include wholesale distribution?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'm saying, is it your opinion, or do you believe that, yeah, the use that you could use in this warehouse is wholesale distribution? For example, food distribution, beverage distribution?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, so, okay, so that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
That's great.
Okay, so, and that, let's just know, we're talking about the same target.
Correct.
Okay. Which brings to mind a letter that I had right here, which I... I'm embarrassed. I had the letter right... Oh. There it is. This is Exhibit 21822L, and this is a letter from Jane Ronca, 54 High Road, High Hill Road. And it concerns noise screening, noise abatement. And certainly, if this project were approved, this would be a concern of, I can see a whole bunch of people sitting in the back of the room. And here's what she said. "Noise is a serious concern. There are houses that have butted property along the south border and a neighborhood to the east along the ridge of the building. It is uphill from Research Parkway to the warehouse, so I assume that trucks will be traveling along this path in their lowest noises, gears, and applying brakes on their way out. In addition, the rear of the park building will have noise from the docking base, which coupling and coupling in the trailer truck parking lot. I'm concerned that noise will be heard day and night in surrounding neighborhoods." Keep in mind, as a result of a noise study, the previous applicant with a smaller footprint, significantly fewer truck base, and a max of three trucks per hour, added a physical noise barrier to mitigate potential issues. And she asked, what's the question of permanent noise mitigation included in the site plan? And I looked at the... Oh, yeah. And I looked at the... I looked at last week's, or last month's meeting, meeting minutes, I'm sorry, I'm tongue-tied, on page nine. And, let's see. Commissioner Allison asked if there will be noise shielding for neighbors up the hill. Attorney Perito stated it's not anticipated. The trucks will be fairly long distance away, and there will be a fair amount of foliage. I have difficulty with that. Okay? You may not be aware, but I think about three or four months ago, this particular commission became very concerned with noise mitigation. Okay? And we do know that the, and when I look at the plans of the building, and this is where the project team comes in, because I'm talking about Plan GD Sheets, GD5 and GD6. And these are the two plans, and these are the plans that show the approach of the trucks make to the building. And when I look at it...
Mr. Parent, you're gonna have to pull your microphone a little closer to you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. When I look at this thing, when, at the entrance of the exit, I see a 4.68 degree slope. Looking further up the road is 4.68. And further up, oh, it's 357. Then we come around the bend, and you're 350, I think you're 350 all the way up to the top, top of the... You're 350 all the way. Those are pretty steep. Those appear to be pretty steep. That's like anywhere from three to five, almost a five-foot drop per 100 feet. And you have the situation where it would appear that any truck going up or a car, first of all, would have to be pretty much at full throttle to start climbing the hill. And just as they get ahead of steam up, they have to slow down, they have to slow down to go around the curve. And then they have to go up, then the road gets steeper all the way. And so it would seem that any truck going in there would be generating far more noise than you might expect in a normal, in a normal, say I say, flat warehouse situation. Or, so my question is, and this is to the staff, to your staff, I think, do you, would you agree that maybe noise mitigation would be, would be a required component of this application?
I would have to say actually no, because unlike a special permit application, it's a different standard for site plan. In the site plan, we have to comply with your noise ordinance. So if there is a problem that results either because, you know, a truck is loud or whatever, our tenant is going to have to comply with the noise ordinance. Now, I'll ask Chris to talk about those grades. Again, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not sure about how that works in terms of, you know, the grading of coming up and down with the trucks. I don't know if either you or Jeff, and introduce yourself for that. Here, I'll move this microphone.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name's Chris Gagnon. I'm a professional engineer licensed here in Connecticut. I think, first off, in terms of the grades, 3% to 5% grades are actually quite subtle grades. You're allowed to have 8% to 10% at stretches, so this is actually not a very steep road. Also, for the trucks, you want to, you want to keep it a little less steep. So in my professional opinion and in our experience with grading out of roads, the 3% to 5% is not a considerably steep road at all. In terms of the noise ordinance, as we were discussing, Wallingford does have a very strict noise ordinance in place, and this project would be required to comply with that noise ordinance with respect to times of activities and with expect, with respect to the amount of noise coming off of any site. So there is actually noise regulations in place in the town that we would have to comply with. There is no reason why our site would be any different because these noise regulations are in place and should, as with any site, if there's something going on that's outside of these required regulations, the town has all the enforcement measures in place.
It seems, okay, so it says, so your position, just to make sure that I understand you. you, as far as the site approval goes, the noise really isn't an issue, if it becomes an issue, it's handled separately than from planning zoning?
Yes, correct. That's right. I mean, that's really the same for any site unless, unless there's a specific use that is known to generate a specific amount of noises, then, you know, maybe the implementation of attenuation is appropriate. I mean, I'm thinking, some kind of factories use high-pitched sounds or, you know, wind creation, you know, kind of things that may require that. And maybe your regulations for those uses might have something about some kind of attenuation. But like in any, any normal type of a commercial use, a warehousing use, you know, they're required to comply with your noise regulations, like any other business. And if they don't, then there's, you know, enforcement that can happen. And maybe that enforcement says at that point, well, this is consistently happening, you need to do something. Either eliminate it or at that point, maybe put in some attenuation if that, you know, is something that would work. But again, I'm not a, we don't anticipate this to be an issue at that point.
Thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Other commission members? Anyone? Mr. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on a previous application, the backup alerts for trucks, those, from what I understand, because they're OSHA-required, those are excluded from noise ordinance requirements. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if there were a bunch of trucks with backup alerts set to whatever the OSHA standard decibel rating they're supposed to be set to was going off, and the neighbors were to say, we're hearing these trucks all day long with their backups, and that's what's bothering us, that's, they're kind of stuck with that.
No, I mean, we're a good neighbor. I mean, we'll deal with it if that's the problem. I mean, I don't know that to be the situation now. I mean, if, like, like anyone who's, you know, you're, you're a taxpayer, a commercial enterprise, but you're a neighbor, if there's something that's bothering our neighbors and, you know, we can quantify it, and there's something that we can do to eliminate that, we'll look into that. I mean, it's, in some respects, it's a bit of a, okay, well, you know, I don't have an answer for you because I don't know that to be the case. It may not be that there's a lot of backing up going on because the way the, you know, the location is set up and maybe the way the trucks come in and out, so.
Just, just so you know, that was my initial concern at last meeting when I asked about the noise. It was not about the truck engines or anything else. It's about this noise mitigation that is required by, well, the noise that is required by law to exist and how that could potentially be mitigated for neighbors there. So that was the concern, that, the reason for me bringing that concern.
Understood.
Thank you. No other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have questions that I'd like to ask the town planner as well as the applicant. Okay. And I'll start out asking this question through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town planner. You know, we've had a lot of back and forth about traffic, and unfortunately, because this is a site plan, we're not supposed to talk about traffic, which is unfortunate because it should be a major consideration. So my question is, in, you know, basically our regulations, because this came in as a site plan and the applicant said they're not gonna have 100 peak hour trips, it's a site plan. My question to the town planner, is there any other state or county guidelines that would require a traffic study such as a project within 300 feet of an intersection of streets designed as collector or higher?
Nothing I'm aware of, but the town engineer did not mention that. I don't know. I'm not a traffic expert. I don't claim to be.
How can we get any answer to that question?
I don't know. At this point, they're out of time. They have to make a decision tonight. I could try texting the town engineer.
Yeah, I
I wish you could have asked me before the meeting. I would have had an answer for you.
Well, I wish I could have asked this, you know, last month, but, you know, with quite frankly, with all the homework I did over the last few weeks, you know, this, this came up today, as a matter of fact, is something I, I found. I do think this is a critical piece of information that, you know, should not be looked over. Okay, moving on. For the record, I would just like, and to the applicant, thank you for getting the answer from the fire department. That was my question. And, you know, the chief answered that to my satisfaction. I would like to, you know, we talked about comments from the police chief. And basically, you know, the applicant stated that the police chief did not have any issues with the traffic. Is that a fair statement?
I think maybe we could just go to the email that he sent to the town planner.
Yeah, I have it, and I just want to read it into the record. So, you know, it's on the record. But is that, is that a fair assessment for me?
I haven't, I haven't seen it.
Oh, okay.
All I knew was that I knew from the town engineer's comment that she had, she had spoken to the
So it's a very short email. And basically, he says, "I have reviewed the memorandum from the town engineer dated November 29, 2022, and concur with her findings as stated in the memorandum. Absent any additional information outside of the contents of the traffic study conducted for the proposed site at 5 Research Parkway, and without information as to the corporation that would potentially occupy the property, I cannot present any arguments contrary to the contents of the study or in opposition of the findings of the town engineer, Allison Kapaczynski." So basically, what he's saying, the way I interpret this is, he doesn't know what's gonna be in there, so he can't make an assessment. And I think that thought is, you know, something that I'm struggling with. And, you know, I won't speak for the other commissioners, but, you know, I think we have touched on that. So I just wanted to, you know, since he didn't see it, that's what he said. He can't make a judgment. Okay, moving on. So one of the this, this commission kind of lives by our regulations and definitions within those regulations. And I think one of the biggest definitions that has been overlooked is what we're actually expected to approve tonight. Approve or act on tonight. You know, the applicant has submitted an application for a 440,000 square foot warehouse with walls that are 40 to 50 feet high. Is that correct? 40 to 50 feet?
This is Jeff Checkaway with Calera Properties. Yeah, the intended height at the moment, knowing we don't have a tenant, is approximately 55 feet.
Okay, thank you.
The existing building onsite that was taken down was in excess of 80 feet and nine, in excess of 900,000 square feet.
basically, our regulations have implied that the ITE land use code for warehouse is 150. However, you know, based on your specifications and according to the definitions defined by the ITE organization, a high cube warehouse is a building that typically has at least 200,000 gross square feet floor area and a ceiling height of 24 feet or more, and is used for primarily for storage, blah, 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 blah. And it talks about additional specifications for, you know, number of truck loading docks, and there's a formula to calculate that. So basically, my interpretation of this is that, you know, the engineering department did not take those size requirements into account in preparing this, this memo. There are higher standards for traffic counts based on what you're proposing. And based on what I found is they, those, these design specifications would exceed 100 trips per hour. And I think the number was in the 130s. So, you know, I, I think that the definitions are, you know, something that, again, I'm struggling with. Our regulations specify a warehouse with, again, land use code 150, but you're proposing land use code of, and let me get it right here, you know, 154, 155, or potentially 156. And there are definitions for, you know, the other sizes of, you know, a warehouse, which would be obviously less than 200,000 square feet. And then it's based on, you know, the, the storage mechanisms as far as, you know, you know, how you use racks and pallets. And it's supposed to be a low land use footprint. And, you know, it depends on, you know, again, the number of truck docks. So I, I think that, you know, the, the notes from the town engineer don't take into account, again, the size of, you know, what's being proposed. Some of the, you know, other comments about, well, you know, we approve things with not knowing a tenant. And, you know, we're, we're a land use board, and, you know, if we don't know how things are gonna be used, we really can't make a decision. There is a difference between, you know, a department store, you know, and an Apple store. You know, those two things are gonna have entirely different traffic patterns, customer patterns, and, you know, we are expected to just have a generic thing that we're approving, so. You know, it's, it's tough as a land use board to make an informed decision on what, what's gonna be done with that land.
Can I just address that point a minute?
Oh, certainly.
While we're on that, because I just, I was, you know, reading through the town engineer's memo, and on page two, the second last paragraph, she does in fact talk about the high cube parcel hub warehouses. And she talks about how the description for the LUC 156 high cube parcel warehouse, hub warehouse, includes high cube parcel hub warehouses typically serve as regional and local freight forward facilities for time-sensitive shipments via air freight and ground carriers. This use is in line with freight terminals, which is a prohibited use, excuse me, is a prohibited use in Zone WI, and is not what this application is for. So I think she does look at that, and, and she does analyze the high cube parcel hub warehouses and says that, you know, that, that, if that were the kind of use that we were describing, it wouldn't be permitted because it really is in more in line with the freight terminals or like the drop yards, which are not permitted under regulation. So, you know, if, if a tenant were to come in that fit more of a freight terminal kind of a use, that's not what you're approving, because that's not permitted here. It's a warehouse. And I understand that there's, you know, there's a concern about that. But I think she does, you know, she did look at that, and it is contained in her analysis. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I read her memo several times, and quite honestly, she does mention that. However, she does not address the size, proposed size of the warehouse, which again is the key definition to this whole application. She understands that, you know, those other uses are not permitted. But she did not specifically say, she's based her memo on, again, land use code 150 a warehouse, not on what you are proposing. That's, that's my, my point. And I think that's pretty much it for my questions right now. I'll look through my notes and let somebody else talk and come back if I have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Similar to Commissioner Cohen, since we last were in this room, I've also done some homework. So first, if I could, I'd like to be on record as saying thank you to the town planner. I spent some time with Kevin in his office reviewing a number of matters, and I found that time to be very productive. I've also had the opportunity to have several phone calls with our town attorney questioning some items. I would like to state on the record that the memorandum sent to the town planner from the town engineer on November 29, 2022, is what I felt was missing in the November meeting. I, I think the town engineer took the time to document some things that were talked about at the meeting, and I appreciate the fact that she did address a number of what I considered open items at the November meeting. So I know Allison's not here, but I do appreciate her comments. I did have a question, big surprise, on the traffic study. On page, on the conclusion, I'm not sure, is the author here?
Yes, I am.
Oh, you are?
Padlo.
Okay, excellent. As I was reviewing materials in preparation for tonight, at the top of, bottom of the paragraph regarding conclusion, it says, "It should be noted, based on BL Company's prior experience with the project area, we anticipate offsites improvements such as clear vegetation at the Research Parkway Carpenter Lane to increase sightlines, move the Research Parkway northbound stop bar at the site drive number one to accommodate truck turns, and then a detailed number three, the Connecticut Route 68 double left turn into Research Parkway operates with throat widths of 27 and a half feet. Current conduct regulations suggest expanding throat width of 30 feet to avoid conflicts," and it goes on, references a sketch. Question to the author or the applicant, are those proposed improvements or only if the state requires them?
Can we answer that?
Those are proposed improvements, and with, while we're, as it was outlined by Allison Kapaczynski, town engineer, we will probably be going with certificate process, which is in length, in-depth review with OSTA, and they may require us to do these improvements.
Okay. So obviously, this is, you're at the local level, not the state level. So the question would be, are those offers of improvements regardless of what the state says, or only if the state requires them?
Certainly, certainly
Trying to ask the same question.
Certainly, certainly the work on our, certainly the work on our site, we can do, okay? The work on 68, 68, the state would have to okay, and they might, they might want something else.
I'm not going into their house. I just, I, I think, you know, I represent Wallingford, I, I, and, and I, as I was noting this, the verbiage of where it says, "We anticipate offsite improvements," and I was reviewing materials thinking, okay, so, and I'm just asking, is that an offer or a suggestion or a, you'll wait and see what the state says?
I said, yeah.
I can ask the question six ways tomorrow, that you understand where I'm going.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And if something the state, you know, wants us to do, we will do that. And we can't do it offsite unless they okay it.
So if the town were to ask for stuff that was on your site, then is the offer available?
Yes.
Okay. So it could be a condition of approval.
Correct.
Anything onsite, such as the clearing of the vegetation and the stop bars, it's your stop bar because it's your site drive.
It's our stop bar.
Okay. It's the Route 68 double left turn is a state call.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Just, I want to be, the town engineer wrote us several memos and the conclusion still, unfortunately, the traffic report has an error where it says that the traffic generated by the proposed development is less than 100 vehicle trips. And that should be, is more than 100 vehicle trips. And I'll stop because you're shaking your head because I, the town engineer noted, it says it's still in error. So I guess, I'm sorry, it's probably the second part of her sentence and does not trigger the conduct, the process. The review process is triggered by your parking and the building size.
With the state, correct.
With the state.
Correct, yes. I mean, the statute automatically says if you're 100,000 square feet or over 200 spaces, you have to have the state review for any, any kind of use, doesn't matter what it is.
Yep. Okay. And then lastly, I just, I don't want to take too long. I'm trying to write memo, forgive me. I think the town attorney, corporation counsel, sent us a memo on December 7th. And, and I think her comments advised the commission because it was directed to the commission chairman and the town planner and members of the commission. I assume you have a copy of this?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So this memo basically is a reminder to the commission that you've filed for a site plan approval for a warehouse. Approval of the application will not allow a different use of the property. We agree, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Certainly, any attempt to use any property not approved in accordance with the regulations would result in enforcement action. Agree?
Correct.
Okay. And then lastly, lastly, this is the part, and this came up, and this has come up with myself, my conversations with the town attorney a number of times. The review of a site plan for permitted has of right use is limited to a determination as to whether the site plan meets the specific regulations applicable to the site plan. I would tell you that is, that memo, that line, so that line in that memo is, you know, one of the reasons, as I've served up here, I get it. There's no question. A site plan is not a special permit. It's very different. I think it has been difficult and always difficult when we have a use such as this proposed that abuts a residential neighborhood. And I personally have sat up here in other applications where abutting residential uses are abutting non, you know, let's call it industrial use. And it is, it is very difficult. But I do understand under a site plan application, which this is, it doesn't, it doesn't allow us the flexibility that we have under a, under a special permit. One of the conditions, suggested conditions from the town planner and the town attorney, excuse me, from the town planner only, talks about the use of Carpenter Lane only for emergency access. And I wanted to ask the town planner if that could also incorporate the prohibition of use of Carpenter Lane for any construction activity in the event it's improved.
Yes, I believe it can because of the size and I think the site lines aren't conducive for construction vehicles. I'm sure the applicant would agree to that as well.
Yeah, we would agree to not have Carpenter Lane as a construction entrance.
The concern, you know, it was noted in your traffic study and I think other correspondence were received from the public. We have a busing terminal relatively close to the site and quite frankly, we have bus stops close to the site. And so busing traffic is always a concern of mine for school buses and the mixing of either construction vehicles or tractor trailers is just not conducive. So, you know, safety, safety is a concern. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members.
I guess I would just say, I think Mr. Fitzsimmons did a very thorough job as far as outlining the various memos that we received. I think from at least my perspective, some of the outstanding questions, issues that I had were presented to our town engineer as well as our corporate counsel. And I believe Mr. Fitzsimmons summed those up fairly well. Also, I would agree with the, with the applicant when he indicated, as far as the memo from the, our town engineer did, you know, did address the different IT designations, whether it was 150, as well as mentioned, the 155, 156, and what those are and how those would not be based on our, or based on the definition of a warehouse and how we look at warehousing here, that those would not be, would not be appropriate and would not be used or would not be allowed in this particular, the building. The other issue that I had was, was brought up by a member of the public at the last meeting. We do have in our chart, there was a traffic, traffic count chart. And in part of the memo that our corporate counsel gave us, you know, indicated that, I believe that that would, would not be, would not be an operative chart nor, and I believe also our town engineer, it indicated that. So, you know, from my perspective, I think the outstanding issues that have been pointed out by members of the commission, members of the public have, you know, have been addressed. So Mr. Pugini, do you have any, any comments?
At this point, I do not have further comments. I think for future applications, maybe we should, as a commission, discuss how we address warehousing and distribution if this is going to continue to be a question. That's my real only comments at this time. I think we've reviewed the application to the full extent possible. So I don't have further comments.
Okay. And again, as I mentioned prior, that this is not a public hearing. We have given members of the public the opportunity to comment. I will give members of the public an opportunity if they would like to make any, any additional comments, but I would request that to any comments that you make, that they be somewhat new in nature. Certainly, I think the commission, you know, has listened very attentively to your comments that were made at our prior meeting. So if someone would like to comment, I would appreciate that, but I would like to keep that toward any, any, yes, just let me finish, sir. Any, you know, anything that would maybe new. So with that, just like to see a raise of hands, people that would like to comment. Start with this gentleman right here up front. Yes, you, sir.
My name is.
Oh, absolutely. If you would, please come up with your name and address.
My name is, hi, my name is Bruce, Oldard 15 Cliffside Drive. I just have a question because they were talking about the traffic model. They said it was based on 450,000 square feet. I understand this warehouse is 55 feet, the last one was about 40 feet on the last application. So that's 50% increase in height, which is going to add a lot of volume. So that's going to add a lot of extra storage, which could then lead to more traffic. So my question to these people is, in their traffic model, if it's just based on square footage, how do you take into consideration the added volume and the added throughput that you're going to get from a taller building?
Sure. Gentlemen, if you'd like to comment on that.
Either Jeff or our traffic engineer.
Would you like me to answer?
Sure. For the record, my name is Pat Padlo. I'm a traffic engineer for BL Companies. We, for the consideration for this particular study and in traffic analysis, we took the warehouse or land use code 150, where the typical ceiling height and the typical size is between 48 feet to 50 feet. So we're well within that. I understand that we've stated that the building height will be approximately 55, but not the stocking of the storage or the supply.
Good. Thank you. Other members of the public, yes?
Susan Larson, 3 Tammy Hill Road. Federal Highway Administration website suggests that it is much easier to handle noise situations if it's handled upfront. I would ask the council to seriously take this into consideration. It's a lot easier, as it says on the web.
If you could please just pull the microphone a little bit closer so they could pick you up, your voice.
Can you hear me now?
I think they can.
Okay. Do I need to start over?
No, I think if you could continue, please.
Avoiding a noise problem is more effective than trying to correct one. So if we get into a situation, it's, I don't think it's good to go backwards. I think we need to address it on the front end. Advanced planning, certainly a lot easier than trying to mitigate problems later on down the road when it's more difficult to do the construction. Second of all, we don't have the opportunity to rebuild our houses in a way that it'll be more conducive to our living style with where we're putting things in our yards and et cetera. We already have outside patios and that are open. I could, you know, I'm sure I'll hear every backup truck there. Second, lastly, when we, when I'm on Research Parkway and two 18-wheelers are coming through loaded with cars to go to that auto business, it's a process. It's not just the turn on to Research Parkway. It's actually as they lumber along on the road and then make their turn on Research Parkway. So there's many issues here that I'm just interested in you taking into consideration and I haven't spoken before. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Other members, please raise your hands. Yes, the lady in the back, and then we'll go over to this side.
Jen Frichette, 29 Valley View Drive. I feel like it's very obvious that many of you sitting up there don't want to approve this. I wonder if it's possible, and I, I know that this is not going to be popular with them, and I don't even know if this is something that can be done, but is it possible to go back and look at the regulations that we changed to make sure this does not happen again and maybe put a hold on this? If you vote no, can you change it in the meantime? Just a thought, just a thought.
Well, with the, you know, again, with the regulations, we have, you know, an application that's based upon and been filed based upon these regulations. So, you know, any action that we take on this application needs to be based upon the regulations. Like with all regulations, you know, the commission can take, take a second look on any and, any and all things. But again, at this point in time, we have, these regulations are in place. This application has been, you know, presented to the commission based upon what we have here today. And that's where we, we need to make a decision based upon that. Other members of the public, this gentleman, anyone else that would like to speak? This lady and then the gentleman in the back and then we'll wrap it up. Yes, sir. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Scott Gray and I live on Oxford Trail, Wallingford on Spring Lake. And I've stood up here in front of you guys a few times. And I just want to open up, I'll just take about five minutes, but I'd like to open up by saying thank you all for doing the hard work that you're doing and for giving us the opportunity to let our voice be heard. And I also want to thank all the residents who've come out to show support for not approving this proposal. You know, I took out my notes and the first thing I saw was when we were here on December 10th, 2018 for this, you know. So this has become quite a tedious exercise for public members and citizens to, you know, put aside their life and come out and talk like this. It's a commitment and it's a, quite honestly, it's a pain in the ass. I really didn't want to come here tonight, but I felt it was my civic duty to come tonight, just like all these folks have. It is a real pain in the butt to have to keep doing this over and over. This is, I believe, the third time on the same project, at the same parcel, and we vehemently do not want this and for good reason, for really solid, good reason. And I'll just highlight some of those reasons in 20 seconds. This is a major development, an alteration of property at the very headlands of our water source. That stream flows through our neighborhood. We've already had our Spring Lake be damaged because of proposals that were sound in design at this very site. So they screwed up our lake quite effectively. There's a lot of salt that runs into that river and it's in our wells now. We never, we have saline content that was not present 20 years ago because of all the roads and all the parking lots and all the things that are adjacent to that watershed. We are going to be subject to yet more pollution, noise pollution, light pollution, water pollution, and air pollution. We don't want that. Nobody wants that. You know, I said last time that we like to live in Wallingford. We live in Wallingford because we treasure the attributes that this part of town offers. And we didn't move in here to be battling with 18-wheelers to get across the road and get down the road to go buy groceries or to go home or whatever. 68 and 91 is a real pain in the neck to get through there on a good day. Now we're talking about, oh, only 100 vehicles an hour. The other day, there was three Amazon trucks backed up to get onto Research Parkway, three. And behind them, there was a line of cars. Now, how many of those vehicles do you think got through the traffic light before it turned red and they had to wait through a whole cycle? The third truck ran the light. All the cars behind them were just stuck there. So traffic congestion, not just Research and the junction of the 68, 991, but also Williams. We live in a neighborhood that we have to access Williams and 68 to get out on there. There's two rush hours a day. Nowadays, the rush hour period is about two and a half, three hours long. So for those timeframes, at six hours a day, you have to either go somewhere else or know that you're going to sit at that intersection for a fair amount of time. It's only going to get worse. Basically, we don't want our quality of life to decline. We want the town administrators and the business proposals that come forth to improve our quality of life, not diminish it. So you guys are in a really tough spot. I understand that and I have empathy for you. I understand that the legal team in Wallingford has brandished a number of memos and opinions bantered about on how the project must be approved because if it's not approved, we will be sued and then we'll be tied up in a lengthy and costly series of litigations. And you know what, I, what do I say to that? Who cares? You know, we want to do the right thing, not worry about what might happen if we do the right thing. So like Martin Luther King, there he is over on the wall. You know, those guys, they're coming along on the Freedom Fighter March and they're in Selma, Alabama, and they're coming up to the Edmund Pettus Bridge. And they had, they were in a tough spot. Those guys were in a tough spot, just like you are, but they kept going because they were doing the right thing. Back at the beginning of our, the formation of our country, you got militia men and the Minutemen in Concord and Lexington standing up to British oppression. The lawyers of that time probably told them- The lawyers of that time probably told them, oh, don't do anything, don't do anything, because the law is over here, and you have to follow the letter of the law. But they did. They did what was right. They stood up to oppression. They stood up to what they knew in their heart was the right thing. And there's countless examples. I'll stop with those two. But yeah, you guys are in a really tough spot. So you've got corporations and lawyers on one side, and you've got the community on the other. It's all yours.
Thank you, sir. If there's another gentleman?
Jack Aragoni, eighteen Martin Trail. I live right on Spring Lake, Muddy River, right next, same river with the warehouse. I learned something this summer when my copper piping in the house started springing leaks. Chloride levels of a hundred and fifty or more attack copper. I now have a bunch of thin copper pipes. The good news is, I've been checking my well for the last three years since this all started. Chloride levels have been going down. I'm now down below ninety. I'm only guessing, because there's been no activity up there on the hill, it is a hill, it's a steep hill. It's called High Hill. It's not Shallow Hill. Those trucks have to go up and down that hill. They're going to make noise going up, more noise coming down with the Jake brakes. I'm not worried about that. I already hear enough of ninety-one. But I am worried about the chlorides and what it's doing to my system. It's probably also affecting the town's water system. I think there's been memos about that from the water department. It really troubles me that I don't hear much more about the water. Everything's about traffic, when water should be the main concern. We all drink it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to speak? Mr. Bradley, and actually, Mr. Bradley, if you would defer first to the young lady up front, and then we'll, Mr. Bradley, you'll be the last person.
Sonya Wolf, fourteen Oxford Trail. And yeah, I mean, I echo everyone who's gone before me. And I, I just want to say that like this, there was a little clause in, in the regulations that talked about, like, did it fit with the character of the area? And this will grossly change the character of the area that we live in, that high hill area people live in, that whole side of town. It changes, grossly changes the character. And I don't know if that's anything that gives a leg to stand on, but I, I hope you say no.
Thank you. And Mr. Bradley?
Ed Bradley, two Hampton Trail. Before I start, I'd like to thank Kevin for acquiring the memos that I requested of him very timely fashion. At the last meeting, I believe it was Commissioner Heim, asked why the Corporation Council submitted a memo. And I believe at that time, Mr. Fitzsimmons said he did. So the questions I have to him is, why? And did you ask council to submit the memo?
Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you'd like to answer that?
Of course. Mr. Bradley, at the time, it was over the summer, I called the town planning office and was questioning the receipt of this application has a site plan. And I asked why it wasn't a special permit, and I asked the town planner to get a memo from the town attorney confirming it was being applied for as a site, excuse me, as a site plan.
Now, was that request in writing, email?
I'm old. I picked up the phone.
Oh, he's on the phone. Okay.
Yeah.
I have several questions and comments that I want to get on the record in case this case is appealed. I hope you understand that, so bear with me. I want to address some of the comments from the chief sanitarian, her October thirty-first memo. She talks about a radius of wells in case of blasting, et cetera. What is that radius? Can the applicant answer that?
I'm not sure if the applicant can. Perhaps he can.
Jeff Checkway, again with Calera Properties. In my experience, that radius can range slightly, but anywhere from typically a quarter mile to potentially fifteen-hundred feet from the blast radius or from the impact point.
And who, who would conduct the testing of the private wells?
Typically, we would hire, you know, a third party to do that investigation prior to the actual event, which is typically called a pre-blast survey.
And if there are issues, who and what are the assurances to the property owners?
Yes, if you'd just, just answer that?
The, the pre-blast survey is done as a baseline to make sure that, you know, in the event there is blasting, which at, at this point, we don't assume there will be, but they're doing that baseline to make, to find the pre-existing conditions. So if there is an issue with further testing afterwards, it would be pointing towards damage caused by the blasting event, in which case, you know, the applicant would be prepared to, you know, replace a well that was damaged. I've never had experience in having to actually make the repair, because I, you know, with the pre-blast survey and the type of blasting that's done nowadays, I've never seen damage, you know, outside of our, our property line.
I want to refer to the town engineer memo of November twenty-ninth, and also her first one of November seventh. And the question I have is, and maybe it was touched on in some prior conservation. The one, two, three, four, the fifth bullet down, it states in her, her email, "The traffic memo still contradicts itself, and OSTA review will be required as the development is over a hundred thousand square feet." So is that still a requirement?
Again, your question is what, what is still a requirement?
The OSTA, the OSTA.
Yeah, I think that was, I think, yes, I think that was addressed earlier by the applicant. And I think Mr. Fitzsimmons had, had a question on that, and then I believe the applicant had addressed it.
Now, I know the, as far as TRIP generation, the IT was used. It is the latest addition. But as the town engineer notes, as we all know, the world we live in is constantly changing. And it further goes down, and it talks about, "When data allows, an equation for the line of best fit is provided." I want to change direction here. As I mentioned at the last meeting, you are the Aquifer Protection Agency, which falls under your purview. Has the applicant applied for any necessary permits based on those regulations?
With the Aquifer Protection Agency? Is that what you're asking, Mr. Bradley?
With the Aquifer Protection Agency.
No.
Aren't they supposed to?
I believe not. Is that correct, Mr. Puccini?
Correct. It does not fall into the state Aquifer Protection Regulations, as is on the map as well. You can look at the site in relation to that.
You know, we know that aquifers do recharge into wetlands, which eventually affect the town's drinking water. And the best of my knowledge, there has never been a hydrogeologist's study done to determine where does that water come from. And I mention that because during the summer, the uphill waters of the Muddy River up north of their site were totally dry. But yet, the Muddy River running through the east side or the west side of my property still ran. Water still flowed through there. I've lived there since nineteen-seventy-four, and it never dried up. When we moved there, there was an elderly woman in her nineties who lived in a farmhouse. And I asked her, "Does this river ever dry up?" And she said, "No." So the question goes back to that site, where does the water come from? And that has never been done. It hasn't been done by your commission or inland wetlands. Just want to make a comment on Corporation Council memo of November the third. In there, she cites cases as well as the newest one. And the one she cites in November third comes from a case in nineteen-eighty-eight, which is thirty-four years ago. I mean, we know laws change. We know regulations change. I know she gets into more detail in her December memo and cites several other, other cases. My, my question to the commission is, and she makes reference to it, what is the enforcement action?
The enforcement action for what?
For any of the applicants breaking rules, whether it be traffic or on-site.
Mr. Puccini, would you like to address that, please?
Yes. Any zoning violation receives a notice of violation first. Then if it escalates, they receive a cease and desist order. And then if that goes nowhere, then the law department files an injunction or other court action against the party.
To your, to your knowledge?
And as far as traffic, I believe the local traffic authority, the police chief has the authority to request a traffic count.
To your knowledge, has, has it gone that far?
Yes.
As far as the commission, anything you've done, has it gone to Corporation Council?
Yes.
Where they filed an injunction in court, and the applicant was fined?
I think Mr. Puccini's answered that, but if you'd like to answer it again?
Yes, we actually have several current ones ongoing right now that are in court as we speak.
Okay. Let me draw attention to another speaker mention. And that is the east side auto transport on Research Parkway. If I recall, when you passed that application, there was to be no overnight parking.
Correct. And he has, he's actually received a notice of violation recently, and he's currently undergoing, currently enforcement action, so we are in the process.
That's been going on now for some time. Just this past Saturday, there's over twenty haulers in there.
Again, Mr. Bradley, let's stick to what we're talking about here. And I think we've given you an ample amount of time, you know, to make your comments. So I don't want to be rude, but if you would please start to wrap up your comments, I'd appreciate it.
Well, my comments, I'm going to conclude.
Good, thank you.
My comments are in relation to enforcement and what Janice Small, Corporation Council, is talking about. And again, I want to get that information on the record. Hopefully, you don't have a problem with that.
Absolutely not.
In conclusion, I find it ironic that the town Corporation Council attorney is so involved with this and the inland and wetland applications. In my opinion, she is telling the commission, "You will be sued if you don't pass it." But I believe you have cause to reject it. You voted down the Amazon application, with Amazon subsequently filing an appeal that they later dropped. If the town is sued, so be it. Let the court and attorneys sort it out, just as the inland wetlands pass this application down the road to you to sort out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. With that, I would bring it back to, unless the applicant would like to make any final comments on the application?
Yeah, no, I mean, as the applicant, I just wanted to bring out a couple of things here on where we've been on this project, and we've spent a, a long time, as some people have pointed out, with, with this process, and I don't want to belabor it anymore, but, you know, we received two special permit denials at this property, at which point after the second one, which was by Amazon, a moratorium was placed on the, on the IX zone for warehouse uses. I, I feel that this was done with the intent for, specifically for this property being so large and with the two application, the two applications that had been there before. That said, we waited patiently through the moratorium, through the creation of a new watershed interchange district, which we're in, and we understand that- And we understand that this site sensitivity would not be approved through a special permit in this town of Wallingford. We then worked closely with staff, town staff, with our engineers, with everyone. I wouldn't be sitting here today if I wasn't 100% sure that this application meets every regulation for site plan approval. We know that it's been a long process, but we appreciate the town staff's assistance. We appreciate the commission's assistance and careful review of this project. But like I said, we wouldn't be here if we weren't 100% sure that this met the regulations for site plan approval, to which we worked towards the new regulations that were created for this site and this zone.
That's it?
Yes.
Good. Again, Mr. Puccini, anything, any final comments you'd like to make?
No final comments.
Commission members, any commission members would like to make any final comments, have any final questions for the applicant? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've served on the commission a number of years, and I do it because I like Wallingford. I live in Wallingford. I was born here, raised here, and raising my family here. This is a great town. We've got a lot of great things, got a lot of great residents, and obviously, we have a lot of good businesses. My time on planning and zoning, believe it or not, for those of you in the audience, I enjoy this. I, you know, I think it is hard balancing the rights of homeowners and property owners and applicants. This commission, we wear two hats. In Wallingford, we have a planning and zoning commission. Right to the north of us in Cheshire, they have a separate planning commission and a separate zoning commission. It's difficult. It's very difficult to do both. Tonight, as has been noted on the record and by the volume of memos we've received, our job is in the zoning capacity. We've already done the planning. We wrote the rules, and the applicant has submitted an application based upon the rules that we've laid out. I want to go back to Mr. Bradley's questions to me, because I thought about when I answered it and why, in the summer, I called the town planner and asked him to get a memo from the town attorney. At the time, in August, you can imagine it's December, but in August, I assumed this application would have generated a special permit. I have no problem and reach out, as other commissioners do, to town staff for assistance in review, which is one of the requirements of this. You know, we are relying on the town engineer, the town planner, in its capacity, the chief of police, to be our, to be the official voice for the town, because tomorrow, I'll go back to my day job. This is not a, this is not my day job, you know, but I enjoy it. I like serving. And these issues, as I said in my earlier comments, it is extremely difficult when we have industrial use or any commercial use abutting residential. And it's always been difficult. With that being said, this application, based upon the information I've received and the memos I have and the information presented, the way I see it is this application does meet the criteria for a site plan approval, the only, based upon the application, based upon the regulation changes that were put in place some time ago. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. I appreciate those comments, and quite frankly, I agree wholeheartedly with them. If there's no further comments from commission members, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 218-22, site plan, Calera, 5 Research Parkway, site plan approval, request for Calera Properties to construct a 450,000 square foot warehouse facility located at 5 Research Parkway on plans entitled Planning and Zoning Submission for Proposed Development dated August 5th, 2022, and revised to November 2nd, 2022, with the following requirements. One, comments in our office memorandum from the senior engineer, Scott Shipman; two, planning and zoning department dated 11/2/2022; two, comments of the health department in inner departmental referral dated 10/31/2022; three, copies of applicable approved deep stormwater permits to be provided as follows: stormwater permit for construction activities to be provided prior to commencement of site construction; and stormwater permit for industrial activity to be provided prior to issuance of certification and occupancy; four, comments that were provided to the applicant by the Connecticut Department of Public Health, as this application lies within the watershed of a public drinking water supply; five, that all proposed improvements received approval from OSTA prior to the issuance of CO. This includes all recommendations detailed in the report from BL Companies entitled Traffic Overview dated 10/31/2022; six, sedimentation and erosion control to be covered by bond in the amount of $1,200,000 required by the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission in their approved date, October 5th, 2022; seven, required landscaping bond to the planning and zoning department in the amount of $85,000; eight, that depressed islands are included in the car parking area as bio-retention islands within under drain. Islands to be constructed as bio-retention islands to be coordinated with the town planner and town engineer; nine, inclusion of the bio-retention islands in final site operations and maintenance plan; ten, owner, current or future of property to ensure compliance of all, at all times with the site operation and maintenance plan prepared by BL Companies dated May 3rd, 2022, and revised to September 30th, 2022; construction contingent plan for erosion control and emergency spills prepared by BL Companies dated May 3rd, 2022; eleven, conditions of approval in memorandum from Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner, dated October 6, 2022; thirteen, comments of the fire marshal dated 10/14/2022; thirteen, comments of Allison Kapczynski, town engineer, dated 9/26/2022; 10/18/2022; and 11/29/2022; fourteen, comments from the town planner dated 8/10/2022; 8/24/2022; and 10/20/2022, with agreed upon request of a no-control access, no, I'm sorry, request of no construction access at Carpenter Lane; fifteen, maintaining compliance with sections 4.1, 3.0, B, and D of the watershed protection district at all times; sixteen, use of van spaces, trailer parking spaces, and loading dock truck parking spaces to be limited to trailers, trucks, and vans being used for the loading, unloading of merchandise being stored in the warehouses and other deliveries to, from the warehouses. Site not to be used as a truck terminal, freight terminal, parcel sorting, and retail distribution center or drop yard. As in, the only vehicles, trucks, trailers, or vans that are to be parked, stored, or otherwise kept on-site are those currently being used for the above purposes. No vehicle repairs or washing is to occur on-site, and the site shall not be used for any outside storage of any kind or for long-term storage of inactive vehicles or vehicles not immediately associated with the warehouse activity on-site. And seventeen, six copies of the final approval plan forwarded to the planning and zoning office.
Thank you, Mr. Benoit. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just before I vote, I'm going to just make a couple of comments. Again, this was really a tough application. I think that, you know, again, we're being asked to really approve something that we really don't know how it's going to be used, as I've stated a couple of times before. You know, I want to say to my fellow commissioners, I do respect and appreciate the comments that everybody has made on this application. However, a lot of this seems to be riding on the town engineer's memo as far as traffic in the application. And again, I go back to specific definitions of what we're being asked to approve. And we're being asked to approve land use code 150. The applicant, in my opinion, has been requesting land use 154, 155, 156, IQ type of warehouse. And with all due respect to Ms. Kapczynski's report, she makes no mention, she does reference the fact that these uses are prohibited. However, she does not reference in any of her memos, especially this one, the size of this application, which again, according to the ITE definition, is not a land use code 150. So that being said, I will vote no.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And yes, your application's been approved.
On behalf of the applicant myself, I'd like to thank the commission for all your hard work and your thoughtful input on this, and I really want to thank your staff, who really has gone over to glove in their analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll wait just for a few moments before we go to item number three on our agenda. But if the applicant would please come forward to prepare for their presentation, and Mr. Allison, just wait a few moments to note all correspondence for the record until we have the clear down. And Mr. Allison, now if you would please note all correspondence, this is a, before you do that, this is item number three on our agenda. It's a site plan for a warehouse for Mark Development LLC at 1107 North Rup Road. And again, Mr. Allison, please note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an interdepartmental referral from our fire marshal, received August 15th, 2022. We have a memorandum from our town engineer to our town planner dated September 29th, 2022. We have an inter-office memorandum from Scott Shipman, senior engineer, to Kevin Puccini, town planner, dated September 29th, 2022. We have email correspondence from Dennis Sanaviva to Kevin Puccini, town planner, dated October 11th, 2022. Email correspondence from Dennis Sanaviva to Kevin Puccini, town planner, dated November 8th, 2022. Correspondence to Allison Kapczynski from James Cassidy dated November 29th, 2022. We have a document to James Cassidy from Kevin Solley, document entitled Regarding Traffic Impact Assessment, dated September 29th, 2022, revised November 29th, 2022. An inter-office memorandum from Scott Shipman, senior engineer, to Kevin Puccini, dated December 8th, 2022. A memorandum from Allison Kapczynski, town engineer, to Kevin Puccini, town planner, dated December 8th, 2022, and a revised set of site plans. And I think that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. If the applicant and/or its representative would introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your record, my name is Dennis Sanaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sanaviva Law Firm. I represent the owner and applicant Mark Development. To my immediate right is Jim Cassidy. He is the project engineer from Halcy, Pearson, and Cassidy. And to my far right is Colleen Byrne. She's the traffic engineer from Solly Engineering, and they will be making the majority of the technical portion of the presentation. Just by way of overview, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this parcel is part of a two-parcel site. Its total's over 55 acres, but it's between, as you can tell from our plans that we've submitted, both Wallingford and Meriden. This piece is 6.36 acres in Wallingford, the balance of the property, of course, in Meriden, and in Wallingford, it is owned IX. It's currently vacant and is located on the north side of North Rup Road, near the intersection of Murdoch Avenue and Meriden and North Farms Road in Wallingford. The proposal before you this evening is to permit the applicant to construct a 130,016 square foot industrial building located, again, both in Meriden and Wallingford. 23,679 square feet, as Jim will show you, of the building will be located with your approval in Wallingford, the balance of the building in Meriden. We have brought this application to both the Meriden and Wallingford Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commissions. We've received approvals from both of those boards or commissions. We're also presently in front of the Meriden Planning Commission with a hearing scheduled for this Wednesday night. We actually have a tenant, which I might be encouraging to hear. We have a tenant for the front 50,000, which is all of the 23,679 square feet that's located in Wallingford, and another 26,000 square feet or so, again, the front portion of the building. That lease hopefully will be signed this week. It is a tool manufacturer. They have one shift, 70 employees. And Colleen, as she explains the traffic, you'll note that the standard that she uses for engineering, which is 140, whatever the numbers are, I don't know them, but she'll go through that with you, and they're much more conservative than the typical warehouse numbers. And she'll explain how she reached her conclusions also, which were reviewed by your town engineer. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim Cassidy and just go through the site plan, please.
For the record, my name is Jim Cassidy. I'm professional engineer in principle with the firm Halcy, Pearson, and Cassidy. We do have a presentation on video. Is it okay to use a projector?
As long as you don't blind me. I'll move over here.
I'm pre-warning you.
Mr. Fitzsimmons, make sure you keep your eyes open, please.
Again, for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy, professional engineer with the firm Halcy, Pearson, and Cassidy. The existing site, although it doesn't show great on the screen, as Attorney Sennaviva had mentioned, it is outlined in red on this plan. The overall site area on this, a little better, the overall site area of the entire parcel is 55.12 acres. As was mentioned, there is a portion that is in the town of Wallingford on this page on the left-hand side or the south. North is to your right on this page. This would be North Rup Road. The light gray road you see coming down the center, this is the access drive to the former Flexall Building. In addition to the light tang rectangle is a building that we recently received approval and actually have constructed for 163,000 square feet of warehouse type use totaling in the town of Meriden. It is bounded on the upper portion or on the west by existing residents along Murdoch Road. It is bounded on the bottom or on the east by I-91 southbound. And then off to the north is bounded by existing residents all within the town of Meriden. Access to the site comes off of North Rup Road, comes through an easement through the former Flexall property, then through this new recently constructed driveway. The intersection's about 1,160 feet down to the east of the intersection of North Farm Roads and North Rup Road. You can see some industrial buildings across the way. This is all in the town of Wallingford. This is the North Rup Road Industrial Park West. You'll see, just to the south here, you'll see some ghosted lines. A couple of years before, we were before you and we received approval for the development of a 250,000 square foot building. That's just ghost lines that are showing you approximately where that building is per that prior approval. The property does have a significant amount of wetlands on it. The teal color areas are wetlands associated with the property. As Attorney Sennaviva had mentioned, we have been before both the Wallingford and the Meriden Wetlands Commission. We have received approval for the development of the site. The proposal before you is for the development of a new 130,016 square foot, one-story building. The purple line represents the town line between Meriden and Wallingford. So as mentioned previously, that there will be a portion of this building that will be in the town of Wallingford. Of the 130,000 square feet, we're proposing to have, I believe it was 23, I'm sorry, yeah, 23,679 square feet in Wallingford. This southerly portion of the building is the portion that we presently have a tenant identified for. As mentioned, it is a manufacturing use that is going into that portion. The remaining 80,000 square feet off to the north, we do not have a tenant for at this point, but we're classifying as a distribution type use. Access to the site will be two parts. Again, there is an existing access drive coming through the Flexall property. We're proposing one access driveway off that driveway to the front portion, the front entrance of the manufacturing building. In addition to, on the far north end, another access point to another parking area for the future user of this north portion of the building. There's also a proposal for an access drive right off of North Rup Road. This access drive's intended for the use of access to a loading area that would be on the east, on the highway side of the building. At this area, we're going to have a series of drop-loading docks that can accommodate a tractor trailer, and then shorter docks or shorter spaces that we can accommodate smaller, single-unit box trucks. Parking on the site plan we're proposing is to have 96 parking spaces in total. There's a front parking area consisting of about 65 parking spaces, an additional 30 off to the north. Because we're not sure of this future user, we also are proposing within the town of Meriden or city of Meriden to have an additional 58 deferred parking spaces. So we have a total parking of about 154 parking spaces on this site. Zoning-wise, when I take a look at the zoning regulations, as mentioned previously, the property is in the I-X zone. These are the requirements for the I-X zone. So we easily meet and exceed all the requirements, other than we did go for a variance for the front yard setback. In the I-X zone, you have a minimum front yard setback of 60 feet. But then for every additional foot in height over 30 feet, we need to provide an additional five feet. So the front yard setback requirement is a total of 100 feet. If I go back one page, when you take a look at the position of the building on the property, it's at a strong skew to North Rup Road. This was due to a hardship with the positioning between the wetlands and the existing access drive. So at this one spot, the setback or the closest point is about 60.6 feet to the front street line. But on average, in the center, the overall average is about 107 feet, and actually goes up to about 145 feet in this location here. So we were granted a variance for the front yard setback. Otherwise, you can see from this table that we meet and exceed, far exceed, all the other requirements of the zoning regulations. I will note, the parking on this plan was based upon uses for the town of Meriden. We are asking for a reduction of 26 parking spaces in total. They would require a total of 180. We did analyze other sites in the general area that Mr. Rossini owns. We're finding that the 154 parking spaces that are proposed would be more than adequate for this application. This is just a, again, overlay of the existing photo to give you an idea where the building was positioned once it's constructed. So the lighter, or sorry, the darker brown rectangle would be the proposed building. You can see the town line cuts back through the property. There will be a series of street trees planted along the entire frontage to provide screening. If you were to go out there and take a look at the grades, what you find today, grade-wise, is there's a slight ridge actually runs along this access drive. The grade drops off in the east direction towards 91. This building is going to be built on a plateau. The docks on the backside will be drop docks, so four feet lower, and then the grade will continue off. What is important to know, a couple of things on the site utility end of this, this is our site utility plan. For stormwater management, what we're proposing to do is we are looking at constructing a stormwater quality basin to the north of the site. This basin was designed to pick up all the runoff off the parking areas, and it's designed to treat that first flush before it's allowed to discharge to the wetlands in Meriden. We're also proposing to take all the roof leaders for this building and actually tie into an existing drainage pipe that runs through the property so we can still feed clean water to the wetlands on the east side. We did prepare an extensive drainage study as part of this application. It was submitted to both towns for review. But the important thing to know is that all drainage from this site actually drains away from the town of Wallingford. It's draining in a northerly direction. It either goes through one of two culverts that go under 91. There's a 42-inch culvert here and another 42-inch culvert down here. So all drainage from this site drains away from the town of Wallingford. It drains through the town of Meriden. Utilities, we're proposing with this past project, the past 163,000 square foot building, there was an existing water main extension that was brought up to this point here. We're going to continue that extension. It will service not only for domestic water, but also for fire protection. There would be a hydrant located on the north end of the building, and then one other hydrant located here at our entrance drive. So water will be provided by the city of Meriden, sanitary sewers. There's actually a sanitary sewer line that was part of the Flexall property that actually runs in a northerly direction, eventually goes onto the highway. All we're going to be doing is connecting into that line. So all the sanitary sewers go back to the town or city of Meriden also. We did submit a landscaping plan as part of our package. As mentioned, what we're proposing to do is have a series of street trees along North Rup Road, and then also along that site access drive. We're looking at putting a cluster of evergreens to provide some screening from the loading area, and then a series of foundation plans around the entire perimeter of the building. The building itself is going to be a one-story building. It is a steel frame building, very similar to the building we built on the other property to the north. And it's also very similar to the building you recently approved for 250,000 on the opposite side of the road. On this elevation, the southerly elevation is the side you would see from North Rup Road. This portion here would be the portion that faces that front parking lot and the access drive. This is the portion that's going to be occupied by the manufacturing use. It will consist of aluminum frames with storefront glass, an EPH system around the perimeter of the windows, and then all the lower sections, basically from door height and around, actually are split-faced CMU. So it's a durable material in all lower portions. And then the remaining portion would be a vertical metal siding around the entire perimeter. So this is the side you see from North Rup Road. This portion is the side, the westward elevation that you would see from our access drive. So the one important thing I'd like to bring up, and I know it's been a concern, was originally a concern when we went to Meriden for approval, and also past projects when we looked at the project across the road. An important thing to know is when you come up North Rup Road and heading in a westward direction, as you come to this site, you kind of come to a hump in the road. You come to this hill. We've identified that based upon existing conditions, there is an issue with the sightline. This is an existing site drive here, and then we also have the proposed site drive to the rear. What we're proposing to do with this project, just as we have proposed with the 250,000, is on the bottom is a profile of the existing roadway. The green line represents the existing grade of the roadway. The red line, what we're actually proposing to do is to lower the grade of the roadway, anywhere from about four to five feet. What that does is when we started taking a look at the sightlines for the driveway, this is a sightline map of the existing site drive. So existing site drive, this is a tractor-trailer leaving it. And based upon requirements for a tractor-trailer with a design speed of 45 mile an hour, we need to provide a sightline of six, I'm sorry, 765 feet. The red line represents what the sightline is. So you can see this red line does not interfere with the proposed grade of the road below. Therefore, you don't have any obstructions for the tractor-trailer. The green line represents a passenger vehicle. There's two different criterias for tractor-trailers and passenger vehicles. So the green line has a sightline of a little over 500 feet. So it, once again, adequately supports having safe maneuvers out of the existing driveway. We looked at it in both a east and a west direction. Obviously, if you look off to the west or leave the driveway to the right, you actually have a hill going up and a slight depression. So existing conditions, you have more than that with sightline. We also looked at the new site drive. So this is that new site drive out to the back. And by the time we look off to the east, there again is a depression, so you have plenty of area for sightline. But more importantly, by lowering the road grade, looking off to the east from that rear side drive, we can also support the sightline for the passenger vehicle and also for the tractor-trailer. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Colleen, and she's going to talk a little bit about traffic for this project.
All right, thanks, Jim. Good evening. For the record, my name is Colleen Byrne. I'm a senior project manager with Solely Engineering, offices located at 501 Main Street, Monroe, Connecticut. Yes, please. I'm a road safety professional, Level 2 in Infrastructure, certified by the Transportation Professional Certification Board, and I'm here tonight to speak about the traffic study that was prepared for the project. I won't go into too many specifics about the site layout, but just a general overview here, 91 North is to the east of the project site, and North Rup Road is to the west of our project site, and our project site is up here at the north side of this aerial. As you can see highlighted here, we studied the site driveway intersection at the project site, as well as three intersections along Byrne's Road, the 291 interchange ramps, as well as the North Rup Road intersection. I'm sure you guys heard a lot about ITE and trip generation under your last application, but we looked at the trip generation for this site and looked at the best land use codes that were suited to the prospective tenants. As Dennis mentioned earlier, we do now have a tenant for a portion of the building, which will be a manufacturing land use. And the other option that we could have looked at for a building of this type would be a warehousing land use. I wanted to show a little bit of a comparison for the different land use codes and what that resulting trip would be for, based on ITE trip generations. So for LUC 140 manufacturing, as you can see, we have a conservative trip estimate of 89 trips total in the morning peak hour and 97 trips in the PM peak hour. So the way we evaluate our traffic impact studies is we want to look at the peak hours of the adjacent roadway network that have the most potential for impact by the trips generated by the development. So in this case, that would be the AM weekday and PM weekday peak hours. We also compare that to warehousing, which would be a potential tenant use for the remainder of the site. But as you can see, this land use code 150 would result in a much lower trip generation of only 23 trips in the morning, 24 trips in the afternoon. So for that reason, we decided to complete our entire study with a full 130,000 square feet under LUC 140, which results in a much more conservative analysis. However, still results in less than 100 new trips to the adjacent roadway network. We also did an operational analysis of the study area intersections I discussed before. I won't go into too much detail on that, but you know, the end result is that in the 2024 build year condition, all these intersections maintain operating service levels that are level of service B or C, which is very acceptable. Anything better than LOSD is considered acceptable. And this site is currently subject to a major traffic generator certificate through the Office of the State Traffic Administration. And due to this change in site, we will have to go back to OSTTA for review through their office as well. That will likely be an administrative decision review, given that we are under 100 trips. However, we do not have any impact to the state highway system that would require a full administrative review, or I'm sorry, a full MTG review. So that will likely be reviewed as an AD certificate, but that will still require review of the traffic impact study. The same one that was submitted to this commission will go back to OSTTA for their review as well. As Jim mentioned earlier, we are proposing some roadway improvements along North Rup Road to lower the grade of the road. That's going to offer some intersection site distance improvements for the existing driveway as well as the proposed driveway, and that will result in adequate ISDs for vehicles entering, or I'm sorry, exiting the site from both driveways. So I think that's everything that I had for tonight. I can pass it back over to Jim.
Yeah, this one, Dennis had pointed out to me, one other good point is not only are we lowering the grade of the road to improve sightlines, but we're actually widening it. It ranges in that area anywhere from about 22 to 24 feet. We're going to make it a consistent 30 feet through a 900-foot section that we actually are changing the grade on or we're adjusting the grade on. So am I okay turning off the?
If you turn that off and they could go away with the mood lighting, that'd be great.
That is our presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Pugini, before I go to commission members' comments on the application, observation.
We did speak at length with Attorney Sennaviva and as well as Mr. Cassidy regarding the sightline distances as well as the construction traffic. So we did come to an agreement that because most of the building sits in Meriden, any latitude that we do have to impose restrictions, we felt that the roadway should be improved as part of the construction of this project, even though it was approved as part of the construction of the, across the street project. And so we also wanted the construction traffic to go in through the existing entrance on North Rup as to avoid any potential safety hazards.
Well, as far as discussion, if there were issues, emergency issues at the property, who would have, which town would have or would assume jurisdiction?
According to the fire chief, they have to establish jurisdiction. That would be up to the applicant to establish jurisdiction.
You know, so interesting, it came up with the first building that was built entirely on an address of 850 Murdoch Avenue, which was all in the city of Meriden, although the access was through that driveway that comes through Wallingford. And the two towns spoke and came up with a new address because 850 Murdoch Avenue is an address that you would never find driving up and down Murdoch Avenue because the access is off of North Rup. So that's where the town, both towns agreed on an address that was the access was through that driveway that comes through Wallingford. And the two towns spoke and came up with a new address, because 850 Murdoch Avenue is an address that you would never find driving up and down Murdoch Avenue, because the access is off of Northrup. So that's where the town, both towns agreed on an address that was a Northrup Road address for the site, and the city of Meriden, at least for the existing building, has the obligation for emergency services, and they will continue to have discussions should this get approved with regard to this building.
So that's yet to be determined based upon the two towns, or at least talking with one another on it, making a determination. Thank you. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, a couple of questions. You know, as far as that change in the roadway, when would, you know, construction of that be done? Would that be done before this new building, after the new building? Again, you mentioned that it was actually requested for the one across the street, but that hasn't been done yet.
I think we can answer that. Actually, it was required for the building across the street.
Yeah, right.
So in discussions with your staff, there was certainly a requirement that it'd be part of this approval too, should you vote to approve, so that's, I think it's a condition that may be on any motion. And it would have to be, that roadwork would have to be complete, certainly as to this application before the CO, if I understand correctly from?
Yes, I believe so.
And additionally, it would also, we would not construct or use the new driveway until that was done. So that during the construction process, the existing driveway that was used to build the first building could still be used to build this building, but I can assure you that this building is getting built. We have a tenant who wants to be in by December 1st of 2023, so we're starting tomorrow if you vote tonight. No, we're moving pretty quickly. But it will get done, it has, I'm sorry, but it does have to get done as part of this project.
The reason I ask is I run out there all the time, and making that road 30 feet wide would be great for me, so. And just one other question about the traffic. Learning a lot about traffic. You know, you mentioned, you know, going through the OSTTA approvals, and you know, again, you mentioned the previous application. So you know, and then you mentioned the levels of service out in that area, some are, you know, not the greatest. What happens if OSTTA says, you know, this is way too much traffic? I mean, what's the remedy for that?
So their process typically is, they have thresholds. So below 50 trips, you don't submit a full study. Up to 100 trips, you submit a limited traffic study. Over 100 trips, full comprehensive traffic study. They can at any time request additional information, additional analysis, but typically, if they decide based on the information that we've provided as the applicant that mitigation is required, they will require us to provide mitigation. As those roads, I'm sorry, on their state highway system, so that would be Barnes Road, 91 ramps, those intersections, they have jurisdiction to require improvements from the applicant if they deem there is mitigation required based on the number of trips that are being provided.
So what are those? You know, traffic lights, you know?
It really could be anything.
More roads?
It could be widening, it could be timing improvements to existing traffic signals, it could be new traffic signals, traffic calming. Really, they do have full jurisdiction over those roads to establish any improvements that they deem necessary.
It also could be a denial of the application.
Yeah, but they try not to. They try to work with the applicant, but yeah.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two questions. You had the presentation up on the screen. The frontage of the building is facing Northrup Road. What was that little yellow area of the map? Like, is it a vestibule? You had a little small area in the front of the building.
Oh, they have a small. So the tenant for the manufacturing space wanted a small patio. They have some access doors, so this is a small 20 by 30-foot paver patio area that's out in front of the building.
Okay.
Actually, so you know, grade-wise, this building actually will sit, there's basically a mound between it and the building, so it actually sits down below the front of your property elevation, so it's not something you really could see, but it's just an area for their employees to be able to go out and sit.
Okay. And then because of the way, driving out there this weekend, I'm trying to figure out, what's it going to look like from 91? Is it going to be visible from interstate?
Yeah, you'll see it from 91. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of vegetation between us and 91. You can see the other building that was constructed from 91.
Yeah.
So it's going to be similar to what you see there.
All right. And then the other, the only other question was related to the memo from our senior engineer at Water and Sewer to our town planner on December 8th. The very last sentence, it says, "A dry water main can be installed during the road configuration for future use per the terms of the application if desired." He's referring to the previous application, correct?
So, yeah, so the, this building, because the majority is in Meriden, would be serviced by Meriden Water. The water main that's presently in Northrup Road is part of it in an municipal agreement, because it's actually water from Meriden that comes into Wallingford. We couldn't do it with this piece, it's not part of the intermunicipal agreement, believe it or not, although it goes back to Meriden. What he's saying is that, hey, we're doing all this work. If you think you're going to be doing the building across the way in the near future, maybe consider putting in that water main now that would service that future building. It's not necessary. It'd be unfortunate, because we probably have to sawcut the road that we just put in to put in the water main in the future. So it's something we have to work on.
You know where I'm going with my follow-up question. So are you planning on putting in a dry water main since you're going to go through the effort of digging up the road?
Not yet, because of budgetary reasons. It depends on the ultimate user of the other building and what the rent is and what it will support.
And help me understand, the dry water main would help Wallingford and Meriden?
It would help this applicant with his future development, and that's it.
To the Meriden system?
It's an extension of a Meriden system. The only purpose would be to serve the building across the street.
Thank you. No further questions, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members? Mr. Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The manufacturing tenant that's there, about how much percentage of the space is that taking up?
51/30ths. So I think that's, I'm going to guess it's about 35%.
Okay. And what type of manufacturing is it?
Tools.
Okay. And is the remainder of the space going to be warehousing, or is there still some space for manufacturing?
We would have loved to have leased the entire building to them, my client, certainly, but there actually has been a lot of activity on the other 80,000. The first building that we built entirely in Meriden has been open, I think, for less than a year, and we already have, it's fully occupied. That was 160,000 square feet. Storcini builds a nice building. We've got the 50,000 on the front, should you approve it. The 80,000 has a significant amount of interest. Most of it's typical warehouse, but we haven't gotten an offer that has met the needs of the landlord yet.
So the anticipation would be the remaining 65 would probably be warehouse, but you're not sure.
Exactly. Okay, that's fair.
I'm just trying to juggle the numbers based on traffic use and see where, see how conservative the traffic use is, but with 35% off the, you know, or with 65% off of the main number, I'm good. Thank you.
And again, I think that's why Colleen did mention that she used that land use code for the entire building, so that we would try to be as conservative as possible coming to you, knowing that traffic does tend to be an issue.
Thank you.
Any other commission members?
Just a question, just to clarify, not to clarify, but just to make sure I understand what you said. That back building, which was just recently constructed, that's fully leased?
It is.
Is the tenant fully, I mean, I drove by, there wasn't very much activity there. Is the, it may be fully leased, but is the tenant in full occupancy of that? I mean, as far as the operation or their, building up their operation?
The front portion of the building is occupied. The back portion, they're in their fit-up process.
Okay.
A vitamin company.
Oh, okay. And just the other thing, I, you know, initially when I saw this, it came to us as a warehouse, and then it's, you know, manufacturing, and it's, I guess, you know, one of my questions was, we're looking at a warehouse, but now you have manufacturing. Now I understand why the traffic study was based on the manufacturing, and you know, as you indicated, the manufacturing would generate, you know, much higher trip generation, and I think as other commission members mentioned, with the, with the, with, I think you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Basically, if it was, if it was the, if it was fully a warehouse, there would be less traffic, but you're taking a more conservative approach in looking at, at fully at manufacturing, which has a higher trip generation.
And that's, you know, one of the reasons for the revision is to that point, because we wanted to come in, actually, we were thrilled to have a tenant for a number of reasons, one of which is to explain that to you. And so we were able to use a land use code that was most appropriate, so we wouldn't have to come back at some later date.
Sure, okay. And again, if there's no more comments from commission members, from our town planner, anyone any would like to comment? Sure, sir, if you'd come forward, your name and address.
Steven Backless, Valley View Drive. First off, I want to thank the commissioners that voted no before. Number two, I think they did a great job with their presentation. And then Colleen, I admire her for coming out here and being honest with traffic generation, because I don't think the previous people did. Her numbers being conservative were a lot more higher than the previous group that was in here, number one. Number two, if they approve this plan here, you're creating a chokehold in the eastern part of Wallingford in the neighborhood behind where Bristol Myers was, because now you're having traffic flow going on Northrup Road, which is another access point to there. So you're going to get 100, whatever, there, it's just, the traffic is going to continue to build. Once another distribution center on Murdoch Avenue builds, you're going to get traffic going everywhere, and then they have another 250,000 square foot section there, which is going to generate more traffic. So how do you protect the people in that neighborhood in terms of getting in and out of the neighborhood? The other day, I went home, it was like 7 o'clock at night, there was one Amazon truck trying to take a left turn on Research Parkway. I had to wait there for two lights. This is just going to become a nightmare traffic-wise for those people trying to get in and out of that neighborhood. So, I mean, I feel bad that they came in afterwards, I wish they were, came in before the other group, because maybe you guys would have changed your mind on the numbers that they had with the traffic generation from the previous administrative, the previous proposal. So I just think that as we're building Northrup Road and you're putting all these warehouses, just the traffic in general in that whole part of town is just going to get worse and worse and worse. And then I think also in that part of town, they're looking to put in another facility with Yale where they're doing cancer research. So I don't know how we're, you know, going to monitor, control, hold people accountable for violating ordinances and plans that we have here. And then the other question I had.
Sir, come a little bit closer, you can't pick your voice up yet.
I lost my train of thought, but if I do remember what I was going to say, can I come back again?
No.
No? All right, then I'm done.
Not to be rude, but we're moving on, sir.
I don't want to.
If there.
Do you remember? Where did she?
Please just come forward.
So the numbers that she generated, why are they so much more different than the previous ones?
Well, I don't think, I'll let her answer, but I think the short question is they're not. They're not, she's used the traffic generation for a manufacturer. A manufacturing entity has higher traffic than a warehouse does, but if you'd like to further clarify that.
Yeah, that's correct. It's also based on the square footage, and it's an average rate per thousand square feet, so being that we're only 130,000 square feet, it's a lower, it's a lower, it's a lower total generation, however, it's the same rate that gets you to the final answer.
And then one last thing. I don't mean to be a jerk, but Mr. Fitzsimmons, I hate to point this out, but you were more concerned about what this building was going to look like from I-91 instead of what the other building would have looked like from High Hill Road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There's any, no further comments from the commission members, no further comments from our town planner? The applicant has any additional comments they'd like to make, or?
We're set, Mr. Chairman.
You're set? Okay. At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 219-22. Site plan, Mark Development LLC, 1107 Northrup Road. Site plan approval request for 1107 Northrup Road, Mark Development LLC for a 130,016 square foot warehouse distribution executive office facility, of which 23,679 square feet lies within the town of Wallingford, and associated 97 parking lots located at 1107 Northrup Road, as shown on plans entitled, "Proposed 130,000 square foot executive office and warehouse distribution building dated May 3, 2022 and revised in November 23, 2022. Subject to: One, comments of Town Engineer Allison Kapucinski to Planning and Zoning Commission dated 9/29/2022 and 12/08/2022. Two, comments of the Fire Marshal and Interdepartmental Referral dated 8/18/2022 and 8/12/2022. Three, comments of Scott Shipman, Senior Engineer, Water and Store Department and Inner Office Memorandum dated 9/29/2022 and 12/08/2022. Four, applicant to use existing driveway for all construction traffic. Five, erosion and sediment control bond in the amount of $21,340. And six, six copies of the final approved map forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Office.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening. Thank you. You're welcome. All right, brings us up to new business item number four. It's a site plan, 650 square foot accessory apartment by A. Lavoy at 33 Valley View Drive. If the applicant would please come forward, then begin the presentation. And Mr. Allison, if you'd please note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the application for an accessory apartment. We have an interdepartmental referral from the Director of Health, received November 23, 2022. We have an interdepartmental referral from our Fire Marshal, received November 30, 2022. And I believe that is all on my plate.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Applicant would please introduce themselves and begin their, what I assume would be a brief presentation.
I'm Brendan Reeg.
Sir, if you could just bring it a little closer.
Brendan Reeg, I'm here for Amanda Lavoy to present the 650 square foot in-law addition.
Okay.
So Amanda would like to have her grandmother live with her, to take care of her for the future, and like to put this addition off the back of the house. I would be moving, removing a small section that's already built there and constructing a 650 square foot, one-bedroom in-law.
Good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Puccini, any comments?
The land use specialist reviewed the application, made sure she, it was in compliance with the regulations, and it's on well and septic, so it did not require any comments from Water and Sewer. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Commission members, any questions, comments for the applicant? Seeing none, unless you'd like to make any further comments, which certainly you don't have to. I think your presentation was very thorough.
Oh, perfect.
There you go.
I was nervous this whole time talking about traffic and, you know.
Take a deep breath.
My neighbors were all here. We didn't want to talk to them, we definitely all was scared of them.
Okay. At this point in time, if there's no more questions, comments from any commission members, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 227-22. Site plan request for a 650 square foot accessory apartment located at 33 Valley View Drive. Subject to: One, comments of the Health Department and Interdepartmental Referral dated November 22, 2022. And two, final inspection by the zoning enforcement officer.
We have a motion for, on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, your application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. All right, Mr. Puccini, it's on you now to take us through the rest of the agenda.
Administrative approvals, any questions on any of those items that came through? If not... If not, moving on to ZBA decisions from November. Any questions on those items? If not, there is also no December ZBA meeting. The full meeting will be in January. And she's also in the process of working on the quarterly report, which will be delivered in January to the commission.
That'll be a January meeting?
Correct.
Okay, good. All right, with that, I don't believe there's any further business coming before the commission, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Monday, December 12, 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions were adjourned. Thank you very much.